I'm gonna go ahead and call today's meeting order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kuzkoudas.
Here.
Mr. Vesey.
Here.
Mr. Rockaline.
Here.
Ms. Early.
Here.
Ms. Swenson.
Here.
Ms. Rinaldi.
Here.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
Okay. That we have a quorum. Everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this point, at this time, I'd like to have a moment of reflection. Would you kind of lead us in that as well? But before we do that, anybody who's got a cellphone, would you please put it either on silent or shut it off?
If I may, Chair, I would like to use, I'd like to use this moment to welcome some new board members, so it'll be kind of a less serious reflection. We seem to be in a period of transition on the Planning and Zoning Board. Edit Prizer's new gentleman down at the end, Matthew.
Yes, sir.
My memory's not good enough, please, I'm just Justin. And then we have a new alternate that's joined us tonight. She's very happy to be here. And unfortunately, we lost a member that retired last month. And I've got to be honest, that, that hurt me a little bit because he was a very thoughtful, middle-of-the-road kind of gentleman.
Unlike me.
Pardon?
Unlike me. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
This, but, but, we're yin and yang and yang. So I, I just wanted to acknowledge the new members and the health of the board in the natural transition. And I'll also share that Chair Mike and I, we only have a little bit of time left on the board. It, it's not real short, but our 10 years are about to come up. And we joined almost at the same time. In the blink of an eye, we'll have timed out. And that means that the remaining board members have to step up and take replacement. We went through a lot of growth and transition in the last 10 years. We are a completely different board than when I joined, how we act and how we do things. And we have a completely different staff. You know, we've kind of grown together and acknowledging how amazing our staff is right now. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. A couple of things. I actually put, signed all those minutes. I put them on your desk, did you get those?
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, those were, those weren't, I was a chairman at that time, so, that's why. All right, at this point, I'd like to go ahead and we have the consent agenda with regard to minutes of April 21st, 25. I think that was the last time we met. I'd like to have a motion on those.
I'd make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't need, don't need roll call for that, there was no opposition. Okay, at this point in time, we have, this is a quasi-judicial announcement and it's wearing enough speakers. And for this, I will turn it over to our, our legal counsel to...
Thank you, Chair. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Planning and Zoning Board acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant.
Thank you.
If anyone's going to speak before, tonight, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm your testimony before the Planning and Zoning Board shall be the truth, so help you?
I agree.
Thank you. Okay, before we get ahead, there's one of the items on the agenda. Small section B is going to be deferred to a date certain of August 18th. That'll be our next regular meeting. So you may want to mark that in your agenda. With regard to the next ordinance, I, Mr. Salzman, I have to make a disclosure that the applicant are clients of mine. And as much as I do not advise them on this particular matter, they are clients of mine and they're very good clients of mine. And I just need to make sure, as far as any conflict of interest, I may have to turn the gavel over to Vice Chair?
Yes.
Okay, then this is the only item on the agenda that I would be sitting for. So I don't know if that excuses me to leave, but in any event...
No such thing.
No such thing. So I'm gonna go-
We do have another issue after, are we not?
And I'm, I'm not allowed to speak on this matter either, so...
No, not, no.
Okay, so I'm gonna turn the gavel over to you.
Thank you.
Okay. And keep my mouth shut, I'll turn.
Ms. Wade can...
I just wanted to make sure.
Ms. Wade can step in now and sit.
You want to come take my seat?
Mm-hmm. No, no.
Because we have a quorum, so...
You have a quorum, you're still good. And, no, we're good, sorry. And it's only for this issue. There is a later discussion item, so you're still present for purposes of the meeting.
All right, then, with that, we'll start with the staff presentation.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Pat McNeese, Planning Supervisor. So we have before you this evening a proposed annexation. And the applicant is here. This is in Fairview subdivision, along the west side of North Pinellas Avenue. It's just north of Anclot Road. It's about three-quarters of an acre. It's got a county future land use designation of residential office general and a county zoning of general professional office. We are, this annexation, if approved, would come into the city with an office future land use map designation and a residential office zoning. So the applicants, Fred and Edith Slater, are here this evening. The property is vacant, except there's a detached garage on one of the parcels. This is the, basically the site. It's made up of four parcels, of which were originally six lots of the Fairview subdivision. It's in the staff report, but I don't want to say it was platted in the 40s or 50s. And some of the parcels were combined. So again, this is just north of Anclot Road. Oops. This is just an oblique aerial showing that corridor between Anclot Road and Rainville Road. So the applicant lives just north of the site. And that is his property shown there. It's got two single-family homes on it. That is in the city, that's in the incorporated area. These properties are not, the one right on the corner of Anclot and North Pinellas isn't also in the cities. And of course, you're familiar with this, the Leslie Hill Teaching Center up north. And we'll see some of the map categories, sorry about that. But on the north, sorry, west side, you've got mainly office zoning. And on the east side, more commercial zoning. So this is the future land use map, the city map. So the shaded areas are in the city and any unshaded areas are not. The site is just south of the Slater's property, which is currently in office category on a future land use map. And of course, this area north is in the office category. And then, as I mentioned, on the other side, you've got retail and services. I put the countywide map in there for, because it's, it's easier to read. And it shows you the whole context of what the, what the city and county zonings really are. Office on the west side of Alt 19. Retail and service. County calls it, I think, commercial general, but that's the basic pattern. You see, west of the office, you've got some residential development you saw in the aerial. And of course, that going north and northeast, sorry, north and northwest, you've got more employment in our area north of the river. And of course, east of Alt 19, behind that commercial strip, you've got basically wetlands. You can also see in on the aerials that this property is pretty close to the Anclot River and the Anclot River Bridge, the entrance to the city. This is Activity Center on our, our map as well, basically coming to the SpongeDocks and downtown. This is the zoning. So again, residential office is what the applicant's current developed property is. And then the property proposed for annexation is general professional office in the county. And you can see the residential to the west is part of that original Fairview subdivision. This is just an overlay showing the property survey. There is a garage on one of the parcels we'll talk about in a minute. And the rest, sorry, this is very, very sensitive. The rest is vacant. Okay, so your annexation criteria. Criterion one, the property would not create a municipal enclave. It is adjacent to city boundaries and it is reasonably compact. It's not in a type A enclave, but that's not really relevant anyway. It's contiguous to the city, so we don't have to worry about that. The city has the capacity to serve the property. There are not utilities extending to all the property at this point. Three of the parcels front on North Pinellas. And there is, there are utilities there. North Pinellas, of course, is a state road and it's developed. One of the properties fronts on Pennsylvania Avenue, which was part of that platted Fairview subdivision. It's an unapproved right-of-way and there are no utilities back there. It would be city utilities when someone comes in to, to get service. So future development of this property would involve, could involve the extension of utilities and installation of roadway, depending on what the configuration would be. There are currently no active Pinellas County code cases open on this property. The detached garage that exists there was built without permits, and I'll talk about that on the next slide. So this criterion is, questions whether bringing property into the city would create an undue burden on city resources. And of course, the final one, this is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the pattern of future growth and the proposed future land use and future zoning would be consistent with, with the comprehensive plan. So the garage was built by a previous owner between 2020 and 2023. Pinellas County opened a code case on it in 2023 and assessed an order of fines. The, the, the condition was never corrected, so the garage was built without permits and it's still in a legal structure built without permits. So the violation was never corrected. But when the applicant purchased the property in February 2025, and he can speak to this and answer questions, he paid all the fines and obtained a release of lien. Those documents are in your packet, the original lien and the release of lien. Pinellas County closed the code enforcement case against that previous owner. They have not initiated a new case. So it's currently known that the garage is illegal. And the known violations include a requirement for a principal use on the same parcel. So it is a garage that's an accessory use. You would have to have a principal use on that parcel to pull a permit for it. That's what held them up at the county and the previous owner. It could never be legitimized as a standalone building. So that's the first problem. The second pro, and you couldn't combine the parcel with anything else. Mr. Slater can't combine it because the parcels are in two different jurisdictions. Second is requirement for a building permit, so it's got to be regardless of the location, principal use setbacks and all. The building itself has to be verified, that it meets Florida Building Code, fire codes, flood codes, et cetera. That can be done with an after-the-fact building permit, what they call forensic inspections. That, that's something that can be done. So that would have to be done. And then the site setback, which is at the south side, we'll go back and look at it, is about two feet too close.
Yeah.
There's a couple of ways you could fix that. Maybe this one. One is, you can't really tell there, but to modify the structure. The other is to get a variance. We feel that this applicant could be eligible for a variance request with the city because this was built under Pinellas County, not under the city. So we could entertain a variance request. So for that criterion number four, you'll see in your staff report that we feel this would create a, a, a burden, I guess, on city resources that would not otherwise occur because we'd have to open a code case. The question is whether it's an undue or excessive burden. Staff doesn't really feel that it is. And when Mr. Slater gets up, he'll talk to you, assuming that the applicant follows through with what he would need to do to correct, correct these items. We feel like it, it's not an undue burden. But right now, we're kind of interpreting that it does not meet that criterion. So for the future land use map amendment criteria, this is proposed in office. We feel that's consistent with the comprehensive plan and the character and future land use in that area that we just looked at. They'll maintain a density of 15 units per acre. Our floor area goes down a little bit. Ambervious ratio stays the same, so that's consistent. This is in, if you all remember with the comprehensive plan, you adopted a place-based area map, which is here. So, and this was something those of you that were on the board at the time working on a comp plan, that you guys really worked, worked hard on. You looked at that north area of the river as transitional and also the parts of Alt 19 that are not in downtown. Well, this falls in, in that transitional area and that Alt 19 area. The other thing about this area, so, so if you remember, the, the place-based area map was something we wanted to look at doing, potential future special plans, if that's called for, some kind of special planning effort over our 20-year planning horizon. And this was one. The office category fits under this place-based area in your comp plan. And it actually calls out the corridor feature up in this north area. So the other thing about this area, if some of you may have noticed, the Florida Department of Transportation has done quite a bit of improvements. And we'll go back. To this corridor, especially between Rainville and Anclot. They put in wide walks, they improved the drainage, they redid this whole corridor. They put in a flashing beacon, full flashing beacon crosswalk right in front of the Slater's property. So that's right there. And there is a traffic signal that is imminent, maybe under construction right now for the corner, for Anclot Road and Alt 19. The other thing is the Anclot River Bridge. DOT has determined that's pretty much at its useful life. That's likely to be replaced or at least planning will begin for that. But within the hour planning horizon of 20 years, probably going to be at least rehabilitated or replaced. So, and as some of you may know, that corridor, that trail corridor is going to connect to our Pinellas Trail, including the offer spur that's going to be opened here in a couple of weeks. So those connections are being made. So that kind of gives you a zoom out of, you know, kind of the future already transition in this area. So there are some, there is a plus side to annexing this in over the long term, we feel like. The question is, can we put up with the short-term code enforcement burden if, if we want to, want to go there? As far as the rezoning, RO is consistent with the office category. The district is compatible with the predominant uses. And the residential to the west, it's pretty much an office designation all around. We feel like the amendment would promote efficient norly growth, again, over the longer term and in the context of the transitional area designation. And we could supply the facilities to the property. So again, the board should consider whether initiation of the code enforcement case would create an undue burden. And also would like you to consider whether the city would accrue potential long-term benefits to annexation and kind of weigh those factors. But based on the criteria, staff is recommending denial of all three ordinances. This was advertised as required. Postcards went out to 48, I believe, about 48 addresses. And we haven't received any response to the advertisements. Are there any questions on this?
Ms. McNeese, I'm gonna just take a moment and refresh current board members, new board members. At this time, staff has made his presentation. It is our opportunity now to ask questions of staff to clarify the presentation. It is not the time to posit, comment, weigh in, think. No. This is the moment where we ask clear questions to clarify the presentation or to have the staff answer things that you don't understand. Anything is available. But we don't just comment, we ask questions. When those questions are done, then it will be the opportunity for the applicant to make a presentation. Okay? Questions? I'm gonna start with the far left. New member, any questions of staff?
One question. I just want to confirm the existing structure. Garage does not have any power going to it.
You'd have to ask the applicant, I do not know. That's why I noted we know of three items that are not on compliance. Obviously, if this annex is in, there will be a site visit and then a code case initiated. If there are any other violations, we would add those on to be corrected. But the applicant can probably answer them.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't have any questions at this time.
All refrain to the end?
You have a question, we can answer.
No, not at this time. No question.
No, and I'm good, thank you so much.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
There was a comment that I read that wasn't brought up in the staff presentation from our storm water management. It's not an agent, the title, our, our storm water management person. Who is that?
I, and yeah, I should have probably mentioned this.
Oh, you know what?
It's a couple of times.
It might have been in the TRC, so...
Yeah, that was our floodplain administrator, actually. Not storm.
If I said, please, could you pull that part up and read from the TRC review, the comments on the floodplain manager?
Okay.
That's not so, it's kind of a question, but I'd like to have the board and everyone present hear that comment.
Yeah, our floodplain administrator is Megan or Raya. Should be in there. Yeah. And she states, "These parcels lie within a special flood hazard area." AE8, that's the flood zone. "Annexing these properties will increase our special flood hazard area acreage." And I kind of expanded on that in the staff report a little bit. Her concern is that when we have our community rating system evaluation-
It is not the time to posit, comment, weigh in, think. No. This is the moment where we ask clear questions to clarify the presentation or to have the staff answer things that you don't understand. Anything is available. But we don't just comment, we ask questions. When those questions are done, then it will be the opportunity for the applicant to make a presentation. Okay? Questions? I'm going to start with the far left. New member, any questions of staff?
One question. I just want to confirm the existing structure. Garage does not have any power going to it?
You'd have to ask the applicant. I do not know. That's why I noted we know of three items that are not on compliance. Obviously, if this annex is in, there will be a site visit and then a code case initiated. If there are any other violations, we would add those on to be corrected. But the applicant can probably answer them.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't have any questions at this time.
You don't have any?
All refrain to the end?
You have a question?
No, not at this time. No question.
No, and I'm good. Thank you so much.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
There was a comment that I read that wasn't brought up in the staff presentation from our storm water management. It's not an agent, the title, our storm water management person. Who is that?
Um, yeah, I should have probably mentioned it.
Oh, you know what? It might have been in the TRC.
Yeah, that was our floodplain administrator, actually.
If I said, please, could you pull that part up and read from the TRC review, the comments on the floodplain manager? That's not so, it's kind of a question, but I'd like to have the board and everyone present hear that comment.
Yeah, our floodplain administrator is Megan Araya. Should be in here. Yep. And she states, "These parcels lie within a special flood hazard area." AE8, that's the flood zone. Annexing these properties will increase our special flood hazard area acreage. And I kind of expanded on that in the staff report a little bit. Her concern is that when we have our community rating system evaluation every few years, I don't know, it's three or five years, we get audited to receive a score, which results in savings on flood insurance for the city residents. The percentage of the city that's in the special flood hazard area is a factor, one of several factors that go into that score. So if it were to increase, that would impact that particular criterion. And we'd have to, in order to keep, you know, everything even, we would have to probably mitigate that in some of the other categories, like open space enforcement. So that, she's just noting for everybody, hey, you know, just keep in mind, you're expanding, you're...
So if I may interrupt, I think we got that, but I just want to clarify. So even, it's not even theoretical. The annexation of this property will cost each individual resident that has flood insurance and our city additional funds to annex it.
So the community rating system is based, now I'm going to get, I just can talk general because I'd have to look at it, on several activities, they're called activities, that the city does.
Okay. Can we call it an additional burden?
Yeah, permits. There's all kinds of things that Megan works with FEMA to get scored on. This is one. This would add three quarters of an acre. Two are already fairly high.
So it doesn't help us?
It does. It does not help us. I don't know. I would say I don't know if it would change the rate.
But it could be and would be an additional burden, however small or large, is that it doesn't do the city's flood rating any better. In fact, it's a negative if we annex this property.
To the community rating system. Now, I will say, it's not, it does not impact the city's compliance with the, and I don't know if Attorney Salzman wants to chime in, but not our compliance with federal flood.
That's good enough, super. So then I want to go on.
Community rating system participation is voluntary.
Okay. And then about, in historical past, this board and our overall rules in regards to annexation, what's been the position of the board about annexing properties north, south, east or west that are non-conforming, that just have issues with the properties? What's been the historical stance of the board in our process?
Well, I would say that over the last couple of years, this criterion number four was added in. My observation is over the last couple of years, you, this board has recommended approval and denial of annexations that had non-conformities, but there was a lot of consideration, deliberation, discussion about those. I would say you've, you know, looked at them very carefully. We've had both come in and not come in, so.
Okay. And then if I want to just reiterate or just have you repeat, is that not only is the property got a building on it that was built without a permit, that building also, even if it had a permit and it wouldn't have been issued one, also has a bad setback. And that would be non-conforming in the city right out of the gate. So not only does it not have a permit, it's built in the wrong place.
Yes.
And then just to cut right to it, we're talking about things perhaps that aren't even relevant to talk about because that building can't be there at all. There's not a method other than a variance to, because there's not that ancillary structure or primary structure?
Yeah. Yeah, so, okay, so, and I didn't mention in the staff report, so this, this violation could be solved right now by demolishing the building or potentially, that's okay, moving it to the property that's incorporated now because you'd have your principal use. You could do one of those two things. Other than that, if, to resolve the setback, you'd have to obtain a variance or modify the building. Mr. Slater and I have talked. He's got a plan for modifying the building. He can tell you about if it gets to that point. It's about a two-foot difference.
A modification does not solve the fact that there's not a primary structure?
Yeah.
Well, it can modify it to a primary structure.
No, the modification alone will not solve that. But if it's annexed into the city and it joins the two parcels, that would solve it. Do you see what I mean?
And then?
He'd have to do things in order. He'd have to combine.
Right. And each one of those causes a burden on the city in time and energy. If we just didn't annex it, we wouldn't have a burden at all.
That's right. So we would cite the case and, you know, give him time to comply as long as he's working through the system, which would involve pulling a building permit. So that's a building permit that our building department would deal with. The parcel combo is a property appraiser item. We don't work on that. And if we ran a variance, we'd add something at Board of Adjustment. If he didn't or couldn't follow through, so we would work through the case and once resolved, it would be resolved. If he couldn't follow through or didn't follow through, then maybe, you know, Mr. Salzman can tell you more, but the code case would go to the board, be found a violation, and it would go to its eventual end, whatever that would be.
Would it be reasonable to say that the most efficient thing to do would be to demolish the building and then come back and zone? That way, there's no burden to the city at all other than we would be accepting AE flood zone property into the city? That would be the last burden? Did that make any sense?
From the city's perspective?
Demolishing the building first, coming back and applying would be the most efficient pathway for annexation?
I think so.
Okay. And then last but not least, is I just want to hear it out loud that right now, staff recommendation is the denial of this application?
Based on the strict interpretation of the criteria.
Thank you very much, Ms. McNeese. Is it time for the applicant's presentation? Oh, thank you. He has Cliff Notes that are typed. City staff presentation, number four, applicant's presentation. Okay? Yes, sir?
Yeah, you're going to be right here, Fred.
And, okay. I'm only the fill-in here, but I think that I'm supposed to say, were you sworn in?
Yes, I was.
And would you state your name and address for the record?
Okay, Frederick M. Slater, 1267 North Pinellas Avenue, Tarpon Springs, Florida.
Thank you, Mr. Slater.
Okay. I'd like to explain that, you know, we've already annexed into Tarpon two other partials we brought into the city. We've cleaned up that area quite a bit. And our plans are to improve it even more. The one question was asked, because I'm trying to be right out and open with everybody. The previous owner owned a house across Pennsylvania Avenue. He ran electric underneath, ran it into the building. The building is wired for electricity. If we go through with this process of annexation, I will immediately terminate that electric. I'm paying that guy money every month to keep the power on that building. So my whole, my whole thinking is, when I bought that property, was that I need a place to store my stuff. I got a grandson that lives with me that works on vehicles and stuff like that. We needed a place to put things inside a garage and have places to work on things. And so I went ahead and I bought it. And I bought it for future family use. And the building's beautiful. It's built good. I watched it going up. I didn't know it was going up without a permit, but I watched it going up. And the owner got into a situation where he needed to sell it right away. I tried buying it once. I walked away from it because I found out at that time that it was built without a permit. And I walked away from it. And then the next time, I went ahead and I went through with it. Now, the way I'm looking at this, and I don't know if it works for all of you, but the way I'm looking at it is, I think Tarpon needs to be in control of that corridor going into Tarpon Springs there. It's a tourist area, sponge docks and everything. We love the Tarpon Springs area. We've been here for a long time. We built a business here, an elevator company. I sold it like two years ago. But we've been in the area since the 80s with our company. So we're local. Kids have gone to Tarpon High. I just graduated. One of my granddaughters that lives with us at Tarpon High last year. I got another one that's going into Tarpon High. And she's involved in all of the arts programs there and everything, the garden, all that other kind of stuff. So we love the Tarpon community. My plan is, I know it's a situation for all of you, this annexation with the non-conforming building on it and the setback and all that other kind of stuff. I understand that. My plan is, is if you all decide that you can go along with this and we move forward with annexation, immediately I will homestead that property, all of it, that three quarters of an acre. I will homestead it to my present property. So now the issue of a building being on there that shouldn't be there, not talking about permitting and the setback, but a building that shouldn't be there, that's gone. So now it becomes part of my residence, so it's allowed under your charter. Okay? So that problem will be gone. Once the annexation has taken place, then I can homestead it. I can't do it until the annexation takes place. The minute that happens, then I will go ahead and ask for a variance on the setback. Because I'd rather not destroy the building trying to make it work within the setback. If there's in the future, somewhere down the line, if there's a problem or something, I'll have to deal with that then. If somebody builds something right behind me or something like that and they have an issue with it, then I understand. I understand that. And so that part there, you know, is something that I can deal with. And I will move immediately in that direction to annex, to homestead, pulling the building permit, removing all the electrical, you know, as far as the power coming into it, getting it re-inspected. Probably try pulling a permit for the electrical too, have them come in and look at all of that. And then I will be bringing power to that building. Okay? And I'll have to pull it from my residence out there or I'll have to get the power company to put another pole out there and put a drop on it. I don't know how that works. I haven't gone that far yet with it. But I'd like, I'd like to see it become part of Tarpon Springs because I think it's something that Tarpon Springs needs. Like I said before, that corridor through there, clean it up. I wish the people on, you know, the north side of me, I wish they'd clean up their property. And the ones to the south of me, I wish they'd clean that up too. But Tarpon Springs needs to look good when we come into it. And that's what I'm trying to do, a little bit at a time. I don't have a whole lot of money, but I've been spending quite a bit of my retirement on this property. And my future plans for it aren't quite etched in granite yet. I do have kids. I have a son that lives in the one house next to me. And my daughter wants to move down. She's in the medical field. She wants to move down and build a house on the property. And they may want to build more units. I don't know. They're more enthusiastic than I am about it. But my wife and I, I'm 74 years old, you know, and she's 73.
We don't have to.
You're not supposed to tell a lady's age, but, you know, we're done. We're done with trying to do things. My biggest dream was to put an RV resort there, but I know that doesn't work within your things. Because I love RVing, I've had RVs. You've all probably seen them there if you ever drove by the property. So I enjoy going, you know, on camping trips and stuff like that. And I always thought that'd be really unique to have something right there where these people drive their coaches in. They pay me a lot of money and then they go spend a lot of money on the sponge docks. So I always thought that was a great idea. But if you all change your mind, you want to do it, I may consider it. But anyways, but that's all I've really got to say. I appreciate you giving us consideration on this. And I promise you, I will move very, very quickly forward on this process.
Thank you, Mr. Slater. Now, the board members, we're going to ask you some questions. If they have any questions, we'll start down at our left.
Yeah, one of the things I was thinking about is that garage, fully concrete, fully enciled, completed structure?
Okay, so the garage is, the slab is concrete. It's like a 30 by 30.
It's big.
Garage. It's concrete on the slab. The framing is wood frame. It's got a composite exterior siding on it. Not quite sure what the material is, but it's like hardywood stuff or, you know, planking on it. I will paint it to match the other structures that are on the property. It's in real good shape. I mean, if anybody wants to come by and look at it or wilt and look at it, I mean, it's, it was built well. I watched it being built. And I would just wish he would have, I don't, I don't know how, if you're going to, if you're going to try to go under the radar and build something, why wouldn't you put it where it's supposed to be? You know? I don't get it. You know, I don't get why he didn't put it exactly where it should have been, the setback and everything. I would have thought that he would have done that, but he didn't.
Roger, thank you. My last question. Did your land, since you've been there, ever flood?
We got water from that last one. Got a lot of water in there. Matter of fact, I lost my RV over it. Got up inside the RV, the bottom of the RV. The flooring in it got wet. I had to replace some of the flooring, but the rest of the house is fine, both of them.
Is that the same elevation? The same elevation for the garage as the house?
The garage is, the garage is not. The garage is, I don't have the print here, but I think it's somewhere, somewhere a little over four, between four and five feet elevation, where that area is supposed to be A-ed.
Just to confirm, it's four to five feet higher or lower?
It's, it's elevation is four, between four and five. And the flood elevation is eight. So it's under by three and a half feet probably. And garages don't need to be at flood elevation.
No, just, just a question regarding the land itself. Thank you.
Have you considered having the building moved? You know, it's not as expensive as it used to be, before you modify or demolish it?
Well, if, let me see if you're asking this right because I'm kind of hard of hearing. So if things don't go through, am I up to demolishing it? No. I do not want to remove that building. To rebuild that building would probably cost me between $30,000 and $40,000. And I'm using it for storage right now. So I would not want to demolish it. Altering it is an option, but it's not a good one for me. But I'd consider that. But I don't, I don't see where it benefits the city or anybody on that if we could get a variance on it.
Have you considered moving it?
What's that?
Have you considered moving it? Moving it to a location?
It would cost, it would cost about $40,000, $50,000 to move the building.
What?
Yeah, to lift it up and move it, yeah. These houses that are being elevated out there, the elevation costs of these homes that they elevate that have gotten into the flood is somewhere north of $200,000. And they go by square foot. They don't go by if it's a garage or what it is. They go by square foot.
Yeah, I wouldn't think you would need to necessarily elevate it to a, you know, a 10-foot elevation. elevation. I just thought if you'd considered moving the garage as opposed to modifying it, in the event that you don't get a variance?
Yeah. Well, it, I could look into it, but I'm probably thinking that I would probably end up modifying it before I want to spend the money to, you know, to move it. It's quite a, it's quite an ordeal and it is expensive. And the reason why it's so expensive right now, from my, because I'm a businessman, so I look at things and I go, why is it so expensive? Because I looked into that, believe me. I looked into moving it. And the quotes I was getting back were crazy, crazy numbers are telling me a square foot how much it's going to cost me to move that garage. And the reason for it is because the people that move these structures, they got more work than they can handle. So it's like, they can charge whatever they want because people are desperate to get into their homes, get their homes moved up and get moved back into them. And so they're just got these crazy numbers out there. You know, so this isn't the time. Maybe before the storm, maybe before Fort Myers storm came through, it would have been a viable thing. But right now it isn't for that garage.
Okay. No further questions? I don't think any questions. Thank you.
I have a couple of comments. First of all, I agree that Tarpon needs to be in control of the corridors, north and south. We need to do a lot of work. And I also agree with annexing, homesteading, and then viewing your accessory unit to your homes that already exists. So my question though would be, in your actual comments in your email, you said that you're not looking to accept, well, actually, my one comment is you said that when you spoke with Pinellas County, that they said there should be no issues when you annex as far as issues with Tarpon Springs.
Yeah, they, they told me there'd be no problem. The minute it annexes, they don't care anything about it anymore. That all issues go away.
Yes, right, right. Okay, well, you know. And then you said you're not looking for a permit for us to accept the structure as is.
That's what I'd like, but, but I'm open to, you know, I'm open to things, you know.
I understand.
There's, there's two, you know, there's two things here that I'm trying to accomplish. And being a businessman, I look at property and what's allowed on property. Annexing in to Tarpon, I'm actually devaluing my property a little bit, is what I feel, because of what you can do on it, the leeway you have of which you can put on that property. Okay? But the plus side of it, if I can get the board to go in this direction and understand the process that I will go through, okay, the plus side of it is, I get to keep my garage. And I'll tell you, I'll tell you, one of the main reasons I brought the property is because of this young lady over here.
Young lady, yes.
She wanted that garage, she's been wanting that garage ever since the guy first approached us about selling. And I, you know, I almost bought it one time for her. And then later, when he was in a money situation, I said, bingo, I can cash him out, I'll cash him out and I'll buy it. And we went ahead and did it. But she just, she doesn't like anything out in the yard. So she wants everything put away. We had containers, we had trailers, storage trailers, everything. Because when, when I sold my manufacturing part of my business that was in Tarpon Springs area, wasn't in the city per se, but the city took care of us and everything. Our address was Tarpon Springs. Old guys like me, we collect a lot of stuff. And I had stuff. And I put that stuff in trailers. And the flood made it easy for me because a lot of my stuff just got hauled away, you know, because the water got up inside the trailers and a lot of my stuff was, you know, equipment type things and stuff like that, and they don't handle water very well.
Forgive me, I want you to be able to speak, but we want to kind of stay on topic and just answer the question. Does anybody else have any more questions, Mr. Rockland?
Thank you.
Yes, just, just one quick one. First of all, I appreciate your desire and movement for improvement of that area. That's something that's spreading little by little around Tarpon in all directions. And the fact that the city would have control of it, you know, I think is, is a good point. Unfortunately, you bought the property with existing nonconforming garage and whether it was a she shed or whatever, and the previous owner probably wanted it as far away from everything else as possible, as long as he could access it. But you are kind of in an arduous situation, so I commend you for endeavoring with this. And I look forward to comments from my colleagues. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So, Mr. Slater, thank you for taking the time to share everything with us and your desire to be part and improve that corridor at your convenience and what you want. That being said, I'm concerned that you don't understand that even if we were to approve the annexation of the property, you will still be required to apply for and be issued a building permit from the City of Tarpon Springs Building Department. Do you understand that?
Yeah, I understand that I have to apply for the building permit. And they'll have to come, either the city comes out and inspects it or I hire a private engineer to do the inspection on it. And I know I have to pay for permits. And I know if it fails.
Then you have to make any.
It's a gamble, it's a gamble for me.
Right. And you also understand that, and I'm not suggesting that we would approve, considering that our staff recommends denial. If we went against staff, that you would have to apply for a variance and ask for something which is frankly unusual. You have a very unusual situation. So you would have to apply for and be granted a variance. You would have to apply for and be issued a building permit after the fact. And both of those things might not be issued. There's no reason for the variance board to say yes. Do you understand that?
No, I, I understand that. I, I feel that the variance is the best case scenario for me. Okay? And if it doesn't go through, then I understand I'm going to have to modify the building. Do I feel like I'm not going to get a CO on that building? No, I don't. Because the people that I'll use to fix it are qualified, they've worked in the Tarpon Springs area, they know what needs to be done. It's going to cost me money, but it's not going to cost me as much as tearing it down, moving it and rebuilding it or trying to pick it up and move it. And I, I like the structure. So my thing is, is to try to fix it to make where everybody's happy. If that's the route I have to go. But if, if it turns out that they'll accept a variance on it, then I'm really happy. So I'm leaving it in your all's hands on what you decide to do with this.
Okay, so that's the end of my questions. All right. So does anybody else have any follow-up questions of the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it is now time for public comment. Is there any public comment? Was there any email comment?
No, there was no response to this application.
Okay. And Ms. McNeese for staff, are there any comments? It says here rebuttal enclosed, but I don't think we need to be that fancy. Is there anything you wanted to clarify or make sure that we understood after the applicant presented?
No.
I think that we would be at that spot, that if someone wanted to make a motion, that would, and then be seconded. And again, we have a new member, so I'll just repeat. The idea here is that a board member has got a position, they make a motion, if someone wants to second it, great. Once it's seconded, we can move into discussion of that motion. That's where we get to discuss amongst ourselves, the pros and cons of the motion, things that maybe aren't questions, that there are comments. And you kind of get to just talk about whatever you're feeling at that moment. And then we go to a vote. Yay or nay? And there's some other sequences can occur if it passes or it doesn't. But the first thing is we make a motion, we make a second, and then we can have discussion. Okay, then.
Well, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Vice Chairman, for the purpose of discussion, I make a motion that, for approval of the application number 25-16, the application, the annexation of this property into the City of Tarpon Springs.
I second that.
Sorry, ma'am.
Would anyone like to discuss anything about that motion? And we'll start down here to the left, Mr..
Vice Chair, thank you. First, I wanted to say I have driven by your property and you have made a massive cleanup. Looks great versus what it was. So I, as a person who lives here, kids go here, and you definitely have made improvement. And I just wanted that on the record, that's all.
I don't think the city has promulgated the adverse reasons why we should deny this client. And for that reason, I think they should have a quiet enjoyment of their property. I don't think the community rating system is enough reason. I mean, we're here, we're here not only to serve the city, but to serve the residents. So I would be inclined to approve their application.
You know, I have, I have very, I had an initial reaction to reviewing these materials, which was, no, no. Nonconforming, no. I'm listening and I understand because I, I'm listening to you. I like you. You know, and nobody wants to make you unhappy. But what I'm thinking of is also the people of our community have the right to have their expectations met, to the right to know what to expect, the right to know the rules and to know what's going to happen if they don't follow the rules. And you are in a very unfortunate situation, and I'm sorry for that. My feelings, my thoughts are that this is just premature, a little bit premature. And that's really all I had in terms of comments. Thank you.
All the way down at the end? Okay. And again, this is kind of discussion or comment, you know, if you wanted to flesh out.
From a cost benefit, I think this is the right decision is to go forward with it. I am all for corridor improvement. I am on the south side of the corridor and I keep pushing the corridor. I am very respectful that you paid all the liens and that just shows your enthusiasm and your desire. I would say that I would still want to follow through with the inspection of the garage since there were no permits done at that time. But I am for your ability to annex.
First of all, thank, thank you for coming and answering the questions that I did have in your presentation. I appreciate that. And of course, staff providing all the backdrop and such. There's pros and cons to this, whereas the one negative seems to be the possibility of increasing the city's flood area. While this is minimal, I think it's, it's kind of a grain of sand on the beach or a drop in the ocean. It would be, would have been nice if, if we would have had a little more detail from, from Megan Araya as to how that formulation possibly could be affected. I don't think there's going to be any adverse actions to the flood insurance rate for other homeowners. We went through this 12, 13 years ago with Sandy up north where FEMA changed the boundaries and everybody was running around with, you know, headless chickens and such. But it just is what it is and we all share that burden. I'm not a fan of the fact that a lot of the peripheral area of the city is like jigsaw piecemeal with spots here and spots there. I'm used to what we used to refer to as co-terminality, where districts and jurisdictional lines all kind of come into concurrence and makes it much simpler for everything. So to me, when I, when I look at the map sometime, I shake my head. And I also appreciate the fact that you're looking to not only benefit yourself, but benefit the, one of the gateways to the city. So not having further detail from, from Ms. Araya as to that, the applicant understands, in my opinion, that you're going to have to go forward with the process. And I would amend my motion to kind of mandate those things, both with the code enforcement case, the building permit, which will probably trigger the application for the zoning variance automatically and may even hold up that permit until that's approved. So with those conditions, which are, I'm pretty familiar with because a lot of existing nonconforming stuff was, was part of my second career, that all these things are possible. And you're the one taking the risk. The risk that we take by giving you the blanket of the city around your property, there's other benefit to it, even if everything goes, you know, wrong with the, with the building and the variance and such, the current building. So I'm inclined to approve it just based on, you know, an 80/20 benefit to the city, to yourself and to the adjoining residents. I think that area is ripe for, you know, positive movement forward. And having it under the city's control, I think is better than having it under the county's control. As you see, you know, you had a highly visible accessory structure built without permit because it's out of sight, it's out of mind, and they just don't have the personnel to control that, whereas the city kind of does. And yes, you'd be adding a couple of applications and, you know, to-do lists for a couple of departments here. But that's run-of-the-mill and that's what jurisdictions and municipalities do for their residents and their business owners and property owners. So that's, that's where I sit on it. I think the flood thing is kind of moog. You live there, you, you know when the tide comes and goes and when storm comes and goes. And once again, that's, that's a risk that's inherent to yourself. It may affect your insurance rates and such. The AE zone is just one down from X, although there's certain levels from that. But I think it's in the bigger picture there. We have and certainly you have more to gain by facilitating this.
I'm going to politely disagree with everyone and say that politely, you're missing the mark completely. And most of that is because you weren't present when we wrestled for years, again and again, over the annexation of nonconforming structures. And I did my best to try and lead staff to refresh my and everyone's memory. I believe that we had taken actual action in the form of ordinance based on an application that was similar. The idea was, is that we were, the board felt like it was being forced, we must approve an annexation with a nonconforming structure. And that just simply isn't true. And I'll continue forward. And I'll say that four wrongs don't make a right. And the gentleman, who was very polite and very likable, knew exactly what he was buying and he knew exactly what he was doing. As he said himself, I'm a businessman. He knew he bought that property with the issue. He certainly knew. But he had a better plan. And so that's just my opinion. And we've been played, we being the board and the city, on many on many occasions by astute property owners. And they create this illusion that somehow it's in our best interest to do this. Well, frankly, it's not, and I'll share with you specifically why. First, we have on the record precedence of saying out loud, "We are not going to annex properties that are nonconforming, period." Why? Because our current residents have to follow the rules. I can build a garage over the easement line. I can't build it without a permit. But somehow, if you bypass the entire process, three wrongs make a right, then suddenly, this person gets an unpermitted, off-the-variance structure. I don't care if he's keeping Christmas trees in it. It's wrong, and it's unfair to all the other residents of City of Tarpon Springs that follow the rules. That somehow, if you're outside the city, but you're close, you can break every rule, and then you can come in and say, "I want to annex, and it's good for the city, and so just accept all the rule-breaking." That is patently wrong and unfair to every resident. And I would also disagree that mowing the lawn on these properties is somehow of value to the city, and that somehow owning it is making that corridor better. It's not. Whoever built that garage was doing a disservice to everyone. Now, perhaps I would agree that having a continuation of all city property through that corridor, that is important. And I'll agree, I suffer the same ADD that Mr. Rockline does when we see this mismatch, patchwork of who's in and who's out. But there is the correct solution here. And we asked the applicant, but he said, "No, no, no." And I'll repeat that. He knew exactly what he was buying when he did it. He knew exactly what the plan was when he presented it. Because he wants to have it, break the rules, and still join the city. Well, everything is a compromise. If the structure was removed and it didn't exist, we could welcome it with open hands, equal with everyone else. He would be in compliance. If he really wants to be part of this city, tear it down and start over. That's what we would expect of anyone else. In my community, if someone built a structure over the line, they did it without a permit, we say, "Tear it down," and they will tear it down. A current resident of the City of Tarpon Springs would have to tear it down. Simple as that. Not even a question. They would just have to do it. But somehow, we're going to bypass every rule and our precedents. And then I'll share again, if we do this, that means that any adjacent property that is not in the City of Tarpon Springs in its county can come in, and now they can use this as an argument. Yep, you have to accept it. You accepted it for him. This broke-down house, this trailer house, this failed septic tank. Now, everybody gets to come in. It goes against everything this board has been working for, for the last decade. That's the end of my discussion. And now we can have a vote.
Ms. Weaver?
Well, I'm aboard, if I could. I would like to continue the discussion mostly to make an inquiry with the attorney for the board.
Yes, please. And forgive me, actually, the discussion should have continued. I just assumed everyone was done. So I would like to remove that, stop the, the vote request. And please, Mr. Rockline, with your question, and then any other discussion after that is welcome.
Thank you. Counselor, my question would be, if we made the motion contingent on the fact that he's mandated to comply with all instruction from the Building Department, all instruction from the Board of Adjustments, which may result in him not retaining this garage if they deny his application or his option to move it, is that something that we can incorporate in, in our motion for mandating? And then the second question would be, does, if our approval of this with its existing nonconforming structure set any precedent for future cases that would come before this board or any other board for the city?
So the answer to the first question is yes. The answer to the second question depends. It depends on what type of request, how similar it is. Precedent is really, obviously, a legal term where a court has determined a finding of fact and law, right? And so we look at those to determine whether or not it's, it's something that would guide us. Now, something identical, the answer is yes. If it's different, which most cases are, it could be a guiding principle, but not a mandatory principle.
Okay, so others, it wouldn't be automatic that some, another applicant could use it stating that we'd be arbitrary and capricious to deny?
Right, I mean, we would, and their argument would have to be that we were doing it also in a discriminatory manner, that we're, we're, we're not allowing them something that we gave somebody else. What's the background and reasoning for that?
Thank you.
So may I ask a question? Would the difference then be if they're about two feet off with the respect to where they're supposed to be? If somebody came in next time and they were three feet off, is that going to set a precedence, or that would be a different answer?
It would be a different, if, each case, we would look at each case on a factual basis. If they were two feet off?
Yeah, then it would be the same.
You're right. And that's the danger of this. The other aspect, honestly, is, as this board knows, a recommendation of staff is denial. And that same recommendation is going to go to the board of commissioners. So I know you all have recognized.
We've been.
Right, okay.
I have one last question. So an approval of this application does not negate the fact that they still have to go through the permitting process to get that building approved with the city's ordinance?
Approval of the annexation would result in them being subject to all the ordinances and rules of the city. So I think, as mentioned, it's almost kind of buyer beware. You want to come into the city, then you have to meet all our criteria. And that may result in a code violation. It may result in a Board of Adjustment request, which there's no guarantees of, as brought up. It may result in a action for demolition of the building.
So it's kind of a no-brainer?
My question is, for your attorney, is that if, if they don't get approved, does the annexation, is it a nonvoid?
If they don't get approved, it still goes to the Board of.
No meaning from, say we approved it. If it doesn't get approved by the Building Code Enforcement, if we made amendment contingent on approval and they don't meet approval, is it a nonvoid, like it goes away?
Assuming, for argument's sake, that the commission agrees with those conditions in their vote. I mean, you're an advisory board. So you, you do the legwork, and you're, what you've done tonight, and you've asked a great questions and put up the great points. And all those things go before the, the Board of Commissioners to look at those same aspects. They would look at what you're recommending and conditions, obviously, but they may not accept them.
Any other discussion, follow-up questions?
I do have a couple of comments, and they're not that, that great. But first of all, he did not build a structure. And secondly, mowing the lawn and taking care of the product is good for the corridor because where I am on the corridor, when people don't do that, it diminishes our value of our property. So I'm all for it. That's it.
And a yes to this vote is an approval of their application. Is that correct, the way that the motion has been made?
Yes, and I'm going to amend the motion to include the criteria that the city sets for his path for complete compliance under the city regulations.
Okay, so if I may be so bold, I saw staff and counsel in a sidebar. Is there anything that?
No, we were just making sure that, we were discussing the condition issue, actually.
Okay, super, super. So, so then I would like to hear Mr. Rockline's second revised motion, and in detail, as best as you can, each and every condition set forth.
Certainly, thank you, Vice Chair. So I'll make a motion to improve application number 2025-16, the annexation of the property along North Pinellas Avenue, with the condition that, once the property is legally under the city's jurisdiction, that both code enforcement, the Building Department, and the Board of Adjustments are, paths are set in stone for the applicant slash owner to follow for a path of total compliance of the property under the city's codes, rules, and regulations.
The only caveat I would suggest is just add the term "if applicable."
Yes.
Because if they come in, they could just remove the building, and then
Yes.
none of those things would apply.
Right, right, right. To the, the path to total compliance for each department, special building and zoning, right, and everything. So that's, that's how it would stay. He's, he's put on that path. Otherwise, if he chooses not to follow that path, would that result in the rescindment of this approval?
Based on your motion, the answer is yes.
Yes, thank you.
Do we have a second? I second that. Do we have any additional discussion? I'm going to, just because I want to make sure that I hear it clearly. As I understand the motion, the applicant, if this motion is passed, the applicant is bound to the process of code enforcement that, according to staff, has to be notified right away because it's a noncompliance structure. That the applicant will meet code enforcement's requirements, application of a building permit and/or the variance, whatever sequence in each one of those is. And then a deviation from that path in any way instantly nullifies the annexation.
Yes, that, I'm sorry.
Nullifies the annexation. I don't know about instantly, but yes.
Fair enough. Starts the process of the nullification of the annexation. So it's either all the way right or not at all.
Based on the motion, yes.
Any other comments?
Can it be done in that order? Can they actually go seek their approvals without the annexation being in effect?
We're not the authority having jurisdiction then. Until it is annexed, at least for this accessory structure and those properties.
I mean, what would, let's just assume, for argument's sake, that none of these conditions are there. You annex it in the property, it immediately, it's, there's a code violation, then they're going to be notified there's a code violation. One of the possibilities of the code violation is obviously going before the Board of Adjustment and getting a variance. So they would have to do that. Should they not get the variance, then there would be a problem because now you have a violation of the codes, and they would have to remove the structure because the variance wasn't in place. So that's the kind of buyer beware. You're coming into the city, you're subject to all our restrictions and codes. So the fact, I mean, the fact that it matters that you're adding that to the motion, I think, sends a message to the commission that this is an important aspect of it, and that you want to make it clear to the applicant that these are the conditions of the approval.
Exactly. And then therefore, we're not allowing that variance board, whichever we refer to it, that there is a implicit approval of accepting the structure. We are saying the opposite. That we're recognizing that the structure is noncompliant, and that this process has to be done as a condition for the annexation.
You, you're, this board is being very transparent on what they're requesting, that everyone knows, should annexation be approved, that these particular issues are not going away.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments?
Yes. Brief. I still find that we are playing twister in order to make this happen. I don't care for it. I don't care for it. And I, when I say that, again, lovely people, lovely intentions, but I'm listening to you about historically, and I already know in my brief history what our stance has become regarding these piecemeal annexations. And I am not for it. I am not. And no matter how we contort ourselves, I just think it's premature. I think this can be worked out, but not by us playing twister. No. I, I really think that some things ought to be done, and perhaps he comes back before us. Again, premature is my opinion. Thanks, I don't have any more.
And just one last word. I just ask that everyone remember the fact that unless this property is in the city's jurisdiction, the city has little, if anything, to say about what does or doesn't happen there. And that includes the legalization or denial of the existing structure. That would all fall back to the county. And in a perfect world, this would have been settled by the county and the applicant before he came here. And we may decide that that is the, the course for him to follow. But I'm still of the mind of we're better off having control over what does or doesn't happen there and not leaving that up to the county to legalize something that maybe we would not have.
But wouldn't that be true of any annexation, Robert?
Only if it has something existing nonconforming or there was some other factor that was not under our auspices before, but would be and would fall into the crack of something noncompliant or illegal.
Okay, I'm missing some communications down here. Anything related, or no?
No, I'm just, I can see that the chair is very anxious.
Turn your mic away, because that would void out all the work that we've done.
And so I'm watching him to make sure that he doesn't.
That would be the end of the hearing. Okay, any other comment?
Not very good so far.
Well, if everyone is in agreeance, I think we are ready for a roll call vote to refresh the memory. Mr. Rockline has made a motion in the positive with very specific conditions. It has been seconded.
Yes.
Ms. Weaver? Yes. Ms. Swenson?
Yes.
Ms. Early?
No.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
No.
And the motion carries. Good luck. Thank you for coming. Oh.
He had to be so hard for him.
Yes.
We're, we're, we're done.
You're just getting started.
Yeah, the city is just, just dialing your number.
Will it take five minutes, and then I'll reconvene?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, we're back in order. Before we start, obviously, number B was deferred. I would like to actually make a comment or maybe I'll wait for when it's time for comments. I'll just do that. So let's move on to the next item that's not on the agenda. But...
But kind of on the agenda.
Kind of on the agenda. I didn't see it on here.
It is. It's under staff comments.
We're going to move to something that's not on the agenda?
It's arguably the most important item. I read your presentation and we are so lucky to have...
Right? It is arguably the most important thing. Maybe not to Mr. Slater. Okay. So I just want to take a couple of minutes tonight to talk to you all about our project and process for the update to the SpongeDocks and CRA Special Area Plan and Smart Code. This is something that most of you are probably realize that has been on the radar for a while. This is really in response to the recent adoption of our updated comprehensive plan. It is also allowing us to incorporate some of the recommendations that came out of the SpongeDocks and Greatown Placemaking Plan. And then we all know based off of some of the past applications and projects that you've been involved with, that it's really time to revisit the code in general for some updates because it's been in place now for about 13, 14 years. So we're finally at the point where we are approaching this project. So the city has teamed up with a consulting firm. It's Inspire Placemaking. And we are completing a downtown planning effort. We are referring to this plan as the place to be by form, function, and design. The effort is including not only the Special Area Plan and Smart Code, but also looking at the CRA Downtown Master Plan. The effort includes all of these items, or these three different plans to look at it holistically because not only do they have overlapping boundaries, but all of these plans really have interrelated interests. The visions are very similar. And it's also going to allow us to have a more robust public engagement process, a higher-quality public engagement process. We'll be able to look at not only the vision for the area, but we can look at the regulations for the area as well as some of the projects going into this region and then implementation for the entire area. So that's why we're not just talking about the Special Area Plan and SpongeDocks as we go through the process. That's why we're talking about everything as one. And then ultimately, it's really our goal to combine all of these multiple documents into one unified document for simplicity, not only for us, but for the public. Because as we all know, we have a lot of different plans, a lot of different boundaries, overlays. So we're trying to simplify things as we go along. So even though we have the CRA Master Plan involved in this, you guys will probably be primarily involved with really the Smart Code and Special Area Plan updates. So although we have a consultant on board, they are not going to be necessarily doing the entire update to the code. They will really be reviewing the existing Special Area Plan and the Smart Code and providing the city with a series of recommendations for revisions. They will also be incorporating any sort of the public comment that's relevant to the code update as a part of those revisions. They're also really focusing on the character districts of the Special Area Plan and the transect zones that are in the Smart Code and looking at the possibility for consolidating some of these districts. We provided you guys, just for some reference, a document that they're referring to as a transect evaluation. This is the initial analysis of the Smart Code's transect districts that the consultant did and worked with staff on. And it really looked at all of our districts, looked at their regulations, boundaries, and looked at all the similarities and where maybe we can start to do that consolidation. And really, the intent is to begin our discussions with the community with the analysis that was formed from that document. So we wanted to provide it to you guys because you have some familiarity with the Smart Code. And so you can see the basis and the thought process that went into that. So when you go to the public engagement, you're like, where did this all come from? So that's why we wanted to give you some of the brain behind there. The consultant is also going to be preparing a series of renderings and illustrations for the character districts and transect zones that we'll be able to incorporate into the code, which is great because now we can start to have a more personalized form-based code. It'll be less formulaic than we have the Smart Code. So we'll have something that actually represents what these districts are supposed to look like, what the regulations are going to represent, as opposed to, again, the traditional Smart Code illustrations that, in my personal opinion, not knocking on the Smart Code, are not very helpful. So once we have all of this information from the consultant as we move through the process, staff is going to begin working on updating the remaining sections of the code and other standards. And then this is where we're really going to start working more closely with the Planning and Zoning Board as we get into the nitty-gritty of all the code requirements. We'll still be touching bases with you guys throughout the process, but really, we'll start to kind of hone in on the code after we get the meat of the character districts and transect zones kind of ironed out. We would really like to engage with you all in a similar fashion that we did with the comprehensive plan. For those of you who were on the board when we went through that process, we felt like that was a really great way for staff and the board to interact and kind of work through a really complex process, decision, have great conversations with you guys to really get to a really great end product, in my opinion, and I hope yours too. Don't worry, it's going to be a lot less intensive. We're not going to ask you for endless hours of your free time in like 16 or 17 workshops, maybe just a few. But we think that was a really great way to kind of work through the project itself. So we'll be getting to that in a few months. We'll get to that detailed session. Lastly, I just want to touch on our public engagement process. Because we're doing this holistic view, again, we're going to be able to do a more robust engagement process. We are going to be able to host a series of in-person workshops and open houses for the project. We are anticipating that the first engagement session will be mid to late August. Once we have those dates and details and times, we'll send out an invitation for you all and we're hoping that you're able to attend that session so we can get your input as we start the process. And then we have already started working on a Connect Tarpon Springs project page that will have all additional project information. We'll add documents and updates to that as we move through the process. And obviously, we'll be able to do some online public engagement as we've done in the past, like we did with the comprehensive plan. Anytime we do an in-person engagement session, we try to mimic the exercises in some fashion online so anyone that can't attend in person can still participate online. So that's really a very brief overview of what we're doing and kind of how our consultants are going to help us in the update to the code and how we're looking for you guys to be involved. Wasn't looking for, you know, too much in depth. Didn't want to overwhelm you guys on a night like tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. But that's all I've got for you.
This might be a question that... How are you guys involved, if at all, with the areas that they're considering as Main Street?
So the Main Street consideration is obviously within this boundary.
Yeah.
So that will definitely probably be a part of the conversation. That's probably more so on the CRA Master Plan side.
And why is that?
It just kind of goes along with those initiatives more so. But like I said, everything kind of overlaps. Main Street has a lot of initiatives and programs, but some of it can also lead to, you know, potential design and different aspects of that nature. But it's definitely going to be a part of the conversation. It likely could be included as a potential project or program that's part of the plan, but...
And one of the reasons for my question is, on a personal note, my shop is Lime Street, right? And I used to be part of the downtown group. And basically, they're telling me now that even though I'm within that half a mile, or not half a mile, I'm two tenths of a mile, a five-minute walk, that I'm no longer considered part of it because they're primarily looking at the historic district around downtown. And so they'll go as far as the new Stafford Avenue Distillery that's being built.
Okay.
But that's about as far as they're going to go. So they've retrained... They've redone their boundaries. And then I hear about CRA extending further down on Tarpon.
Okay. So the CRA boundary is what it is.
Because I'm part of the CRA.
You're part of CRA, yeah. You are within that CRA boundary. That boundary is not changing and will not change as a part of this. That is something that is set and it can't change without going through a pretty extensive process.
Can't take that CRA boundary and throw it somewhere else?
No. If we wanted to expand that boundary, we'd have to go through a process that involves the county to do so. So that's a much more intense project process involvement. So no. So the CRA boundary will remain the same boundary. The same programs that we have in place won't continue as they are. And part of this process may look at potential other opportunities for different programs and opportunities that can be applied elsewhere in the CRA. Maybe they're not in that immediate downtown area, but we all know that there's, you know, other areas of, within this study area, that could benefit.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
I have a question, just hopefully to clarify for myself, current members and new members. This discussion is all about the Special Area Plan?
So it's...
The SAP plus SpongeDocks?
So the boundary of the study area and in that transect evaluation, you can see kind of the boundary.
Could you show us that? There's a link and I think it's on page 11 or 13. Could you give everyone a visual of exactly the boundary of what you're discussing?
Let me... Actually, let me go up to show you the existing, I think... Oh, no, it doesn't have an existing, sorry. Okay. So it's going to be hard to show, but generally, this is the study area boundary. This also includes kind of this general area, kind of this yellow area, a little bit of this blue in here. This is not currently within the Special Area Plan boundary. And I'm going to say Smart Code because it's shorter than Special Area Plan. Those are interchangeable. That's not within the Smart Code. This was part of our Greatown study. And a lot of the information that we gathered from the public with that and what they would like to see, some of the regulations really could be... Some of the desires could really be handled through the form-based code, which is the Smart Code. So we're looking to, with this project and this update to the code, to expand those form-based regulations in the Smart Code to incorporate this area. So right now, this is the study area we're looking at incorporating. Currently, the SpongeDocks area here and all the way down Pinellas and Tarpon, that's the current Smart Code boundary. The CRA is primary... It doesn't include the SpongeDocks. It's just primarily the corridor and Tarpon.
Okay. So if I can, can you show a map that maybe everyone can see? So and this is just me. Now that's one... Can you do an overlay on the city of Tarpon Springs? Looks like page 45?
Oh, they have a... Yeah. Forty... Is it 45 of the Agenda Packet?
It's the link on the Agenda Packet.
Uh, here. Okay. Let me go to that instead.
And that link is, of course, taking it to the SP... The Special Area Plan that was passed. And so that's the map that is in part of that.
Yeah, it's not 45.
I'm generally trying to help everyone because she's moves really fast and there's a lot of complex acronyms because it is very, very complex. This is why we're lucky to have such a good planning department. But what I understand, and if I say something wrong, she'll correct me, the idea is that there are so many rules and overlays within this one particular district. We're not talking about all of Tarpon Springs, just a slice.
I'm going to go to our zoning map. I'm going to go to our online zoning map. I think that might be easier to kind of turn things on and off on our great new website, by the way. Okay. Let me turn off just our normal zoning for right now. Turn on our... I'm going to do the transect zones. Okay. So zooming in downtown.
There it is.
This right here, it's a little hard to get it all on the screen, but this, all the colored properties here is your Special Area Plan Smart Code boundary.
Okay. So this is the area of everything that you've been talking about.
Currently, the current boundary.
With the guidance of a specialist and you're going to bring all the rules and meld them all into one pot, one recipe.
Yeah. Our ultimate goal was, one, we have a Special Area Plan and a Smart Code. Definitely, we want to combine those into one document. That will make our life a lot easier. So that definitely is one. And then what we're looking to do is also this area here. You can see my mouse.
Bring that into that because it's not there now.
Correct. It's just in our... It's under the guidance of, or the regulation of the Land Development Code. And that's based off the recommendations we got from the Greatown Placemaking Study. So it's not like we just made it up. So that's what we're looking to do, incorporate it with this update.
And so how does that... How will that involve when you're talking about bringing us in for some of these workshops? How is that going to involve this Planning and Zoning Board? What are you going to be asking us to do?
Sure. So the first step that we're working through with the consultant and the community and will involve you as well is really working on the districts. So these, all these different colors are the districts. So each district has their own set of requirements. You know, what are your setbacks? What's your height? What are your uses? Those types of things. So...
Would that prevent the, like, that property on Grand Boulevard being built?
Are you talking about the really big one?
Yeah, the one that...
Oh, the... The people call it the Taco Bell House?
Yeah.
That's... That is ultimately our goal, is to put in... I don't call them design guidelines. I call them form-based guidelines. That is the goal, to put in... To put in things in place that allows you to build new structures in the Greetown area that is more consistent with what is there.
You have, you have these bungalows, old bungalows in the SpongeDocks area or the Greetown area. And somebody, you know, with their right to do, they built, like, they said, like, it looks like a Taco Bell.
Oh, is that one of those modern?
It's very modern.
You saw that thing?
It's a house?
I told my wife by there and said, "If we had better rules, that would not have been allowed to happen." And they couldn't have done that, didn't even...
Yeah. And ways to look at that, not like, I'm not, not like I'm saying I know exactly what would come into play, but things that you could potentially do, and maybe it will fall into place in this particular area. And we've talked about in the code, you know, do we have different layers that apply? Like, if you're on this street or in this area, maybe this layer applies to you or not. But you can, you know, talk about the type of roof lines that would have addressed that particular property. If you have to have a porch, or is a garage need to be set back, different type of aspects of a building that affect the form, that's what really makes the big difference in the neighborhood. So that's where you have a lot of, you're allowed to, you have a lot more flexibility with a form-based code than you do with a land of, like, a regular zoning ordinance. So this is what we're looking to do, is really fine-tune that. Because now that we've had our Smart Code in place, which is great for however many years that it's been in place, we see, you know, we see things that we like, things that we don't like. We see things that, you know, didn't really have a lot of guidance, maybe things that are a little too restrictive, and now we can make those adjustments based off of that. But yeah, definitely, I think the, there was consensus. That was my favorite thing, we found a point of consensus. No one liked that house. I'm sorry, whoever lives in that house. Yes.
The consultant that you mentioned? Who, is it a different consultant that we had in our workshops before?
Yes. Yeah, this is a different group. Their, their name is Inspire Placemaking. They're fantastic. This is really kind of their, their wheelhouse is downtown planning, economic development. They do a lot of form-based code, comprehensive planning. They've been really great to work with so far. They've been on board for a couple months as we're doing a lot of the background data analysis. We've done a few stakeholder interviews. Ms. Swinson was on that, to kind of ramp up to this community engagement process.
So they're totally independent?
Yeah. It's a completely different group. Yeah. Yeah, this is the first time that I believe the city has worked with them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Ali, is, is the goal, the end game, to have no separate area like the SpongeDocks, to have, to have regulations apply uniformly according to all the Special Area Plans and Smart Codes? Or will there be some little...
There'll, no. There'll always be different areas, because every area has its own unique character and needs. But where, what we have found is, maybe how it's currently broken up is maybe a little too much. We have a lot of districts in a very small area, and we found a lot of overlap, there's very small nuances. So that's what we're kind of trying to go to the public first with. See the reaction, see what people think. It's always good to go to the public with something and have them react to, and then work off of that. So, yeah. And like in the SpongeDocks area, we, we looked at like combining some of this into one area, you know, the waterfront into something different, as opposed to having three different districts that ultimately have very similar characteristics.
Thank you.
Could you print out those maps for us? That, just like that?
This one right here? I can make a print. I can also show you all how to access this online too, but I am happy to print it.
On the city's website. On the city's website.
Yeah. If you go to the city's website, and if you go under the Planning Department, we have a really great page now, finally. I'm really excited about it. We have all these different links, but you can get to the zoning and land use map. Is this one right here? If you click on that, I'm just gonna show you how to turn the layers on and off, because automatically, the zoning ordinance layers, so the Land Development Code comes up. I don't know why I'm calling it zoning ordinance. Those come up by default. But to turn layers on and off is this little hamburger stacked paper here. And it has all these different things that you can turn on and off. But the Special Area Plan, SAP, character districts, and transect zones is what I had turn on. And you can just turn off the zoning and look at that. But I can print you a paper copy if you'd like that too.
With the color, I'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, I can print you one.
Oh, that's great. Excellent.
Are there any other questions?
No, it's great.
All right. Well, look forward to your invite, and I hope to see every single person there. All right. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Actually, looking forward to, to that engagement. Before we adjourn, is there any board comments?
Just welcome to the new people.
And I, I do have one, because I didn't get a chance to speak all night, so I was biting my tongue. In any event, I, just, just for your, the new board members, one of the things, I think, and if you've watched the P&amp;Z over the years, you've seen it transform significantly, where it was just people sitting here keeping, you know, their chairs warm, I hate to say it, but I think years ago, it started to change. You know, it started with Mr. Seaman as the chair. And, and what you saw was a board that had become very engaged with regard to the city. That's why you see it spends time. And what was evident was the last, was the first thing that we, you had on the agenda today. It shows you a, how everybody vetted this particular applicant. And, you know, and, and so, I just, you could see, I think we do a... I, I know the, the commission has a lot more items on an agenda that they have to go through, but we, in all honesty, I think we vet the applicants a lot more than anybody else does. And, and that's, that's a testament to this, this P&amp;Z board. So, and I, I actually watch some P&amp;Z boards in other communities, and they do not vet the applicants as thoroughly as, as this board does. So that, that's something all this board needs to take stock in. And that's for the new board members as well. Thank you. With that, we, we are adjourned at 8:24.